Before we begin, I'll hand it over to Minister Raban. I would like to ask everyone, if you have any cell phones, to please put it on silent during this time. I also would like to direct you to the sign-in sheet at the door. That sign-in sheet is a way for us to stay connected, so that you will be kept abreast with all that's going on with these reforms. So you will get notices, whether it be WhatsApp or through email, relaying all the information and the progress that we're taking during these reforms. And for the last housekeeping note, I just want to add that this paper right here has all the information that our ministers' contacts in social media, but it's also this QR code here, where you can submit any questions if you do not want to speak freely in front of the room. And I will be checking those throughout the night to put them to the floor and to the minister. Also, finally, I know that some of you have already helped yourselves, but there are refreshments for you to enjoy during this evening. So without further ado, I would pass it over to the Minister for the Cabinet Office and Digital Innovation, the Honorable Diallo Raban.
Thank you, Shmari. I don't believe you mentioned that Shmari is my aide. I think it's really positive to have young people and putting them in positions for them to learn on how the government of Bermuda works and they're able to participate in events like this. And so I just want to thank everybody for coming. As announced, my name is Diallo Raban. I'm the minister. Oh, and I'm sorry, I do want to say welcome to Senator Misha Fobler, Senator Lauren Bell, and Senator Robin Tucker. Thank you. MP, I'm sorry. I do apologize. MP, yes. MP Robin Tucker, thank you for coming out. I do see a candidate at Spec 6 back there, Joseph Marable. Did I say the last name right? Thank you. Thank you for coming out for this very important discussion that we've started. And so I am the Minister for Cabinet Office and Digital Innovation, and we lead the policy. We need the policy around electoral reform. And while our elections themselves are run by the parliamentary registrar, and I do want to take a moment to thank the parliamentary registrar for joining us tonight, who is fully independent from the government and does not take direction from ministers or political parties when it comes to administering our elections. Our democracy belongs to the people of Bermuda. It works when voters feel that they can cast their votes freely, fairly, and full of confidence that the process is managed by an independent office and not by politicians. This is why we're looking at a full reform package tonight. Some have suggested quick fixes. Our view is that if we're going to make changes, we should do it in a way that protects the independence of our elections, strengthens trust, and holds up no matter who is in government or the opposition. You should have a small paper that has been announced to you. It's for the Slido details, and just how that works is you can scan the QR code. It takes you to the website. You enter in the code that's on that Slido paper, and you're able to post questions that you may have while we're doing the presentation. And some people prefer not to speak out in public, and they'll post questions. But rest assured, we will try our very best to answer all of them. Over the next few slides, I will walk through the four pillars that's guiding this work, the conversations we've already had with Bermudians here and overseas, and how your feedback will help shape what eventually goes to the House in terms of legislation to effect some of the changes that we are referring to. Now, when we say comprehensive electoral reform, we're not just talking about simply adding absentee balloting or absentee voting to an old system. Part of our election laws were built for a different time, and this is the moment to update the whole framework in a sensible and coordinated fashion. This means looking at how we register voters, how Election Day actually runs, how campaigns are funded, how the entire process is overseen. The goal is straightforward. Expand access to the ballot, modernize our laws using recognized international standards, and reinforce public trust that Bermuda's elections are independent, fair, and well-run. This isn't about changing everything or touching the Constitution. Within the powers we have, we're taking a serious, full look on what we can improve now, so the system works for every eligible Bermudian today and for the years to come. Our democracy has grown in steps. In 1874, Bermuda adopted the secret ballot. Finally, your vote was protected from employers, landlords, or anyone else. In 1883, WHT Joe became the first black member of parliament. And in the 1940s, women won the right to vote and later took their seats in parliament. In the 60s and 70s, opened up things further by ending the property-based plus vote and lowering the voting age to 18. In 2003, we made one person, one vote real. We have single-member constituencies. Every generation has widened the participation. That is why we're discussing tonight is simply the next step in that long journey in making our system more fair, more open, and more reflective of Bermuda today. Our most recent election on February 18, 2025, gave us a clear picture of where things stand. We had 110 candidates, including 27 independents. Just over 45,000 registered voters. Turnout was just under 55%, which is slightly lower than 2020. Out of nearly 25,000 votes counted, 295 were rejected, about 1.2%. That's slightly higher than usual. It is a signal that we need to look closer on how clear and accessible our voting process is in practice, not just in paper. We saw a strong demand for flexibility. More than 3,000 people used advanced polling, including over 400 travelers. Assisted voting also remained essential, with 188 voters supported at homes and institutions. Importantly, there were no major incidents or signs of fraud, and the live results platform worked very smoothly. This was credible. This was a credible election. But the turnout numbers, the rejected ballots, and the reliance on early and assisted voting all point to the same thing, that we can make the system easier to use, clearer to navigate, and more accessible to every Bermudian. Those principles, access, fairness, transparency, and integrity continue to guide this entire reform effort. I want to start by explaining why we are having this conversation. Our elections work, and people have confidence in the process. At the same time, there are areas where we can strengthen what already exists. We want voter rules that are routinely checked, protect people's privacy, and provide the public with clear, simple information. We also want to look at how many more Bermudians can cast a ballot, especially those overseas or who may struggle to get to a polling station on Election Day. We also aim to have a clear election playbook, so that every station and every campaign follows the same set of rules. And so laws around undue influence and bribery stay up to date. On the practical side, we want to modernize how elections are run and reported, so that the system is easier to manage and easier for the public to understand. Finally, we're taking a careful look at campaign finance, party rules, and the overall oversight of the parliamentary registrar's office. This is about supporting the registrar with the structure, independence, and tools to keep the process strong and trusted. We are grounding this work in the standard set by the Commonwealth Parliamentary Association. Not a copy of anyone, but to measure ourselves against recognized best practices. For voter access and registration, the goal is accurate rules before every election, secure options for eligible Bermudians overseas, and fair challenge process that still protects privacy. On Election Day, the benchmark is uniform rules at every station, clear information, and publicized steps for handling challenges, spoiled ballots, and close results. For campaign and election finances, it's public reporting of major donations and spending sensible thresholds, and consistent rules for parties, candidates, and third-party groups, including digital activity. And finally, strong oversight. A parliamentary registry office with a clear mandate, real enforcement tools, and public reporting after each election. These are the standards we're steering towards, practical steps that strengthen a system that already works. These are the four pillars that will guide the reform process. Pillar one, voter access and registration. This first pillar is about making the right to vote something people can actually use. We are looking at secure absentee or advanced options for eligible Bermudians overseas and for people who cannot reach a polling station. We will also review Election Day scheduling, so work, school, and caring duties don't get in the way of voting. We want voter rules that are genuinely accurate before each election. That means stronger routine upkeep, smarter data sharing, and exploring more automatic or streamlined ways to register, check details, and fix errors. We also want clearer rules when someone is added, removed, or reinstated, especially returning Bermudians. And finally, we're aiming for a better balance in how the registry is published and challenged. Parties should be able to scrutinize and object where needed, but voters' privacy and data still must be protected. Pillar two, Election Day and voting processes. This pillar focuses on creating one clear Election Day playbook. Every polling station should be working from the same set of procedures from opening to closing. That includes reviewing roles and training for presiding officers and staff, and making sure their powers and responsibilities are clearly defined for agents and observers. We want balanced rules for activity on and near Polling Day. We can keep the Bermudian feel around. We want to keep the Bermudian feel around elections while ensuring pressure, intimidation, or disruption happens at the... No pressure, intimidation, or disruption happens at the entrance. We're looking at ways to modernize the voting experience, so it's simple to navigate, accessible for people who have different needs, and fully secret. We want clear, published steps for disputes, challenges, spoiled ballots, recounts, and close results, so every station handles these matters in the same way. Campaign and election finance. Here, we are stepping into new territory. Bermuda does not currently have full campaign finance frameworks, or this work begins to... and this work will begin to fill that gap. We want clear fear rules on donations and spending for the first time. Who can donate? Any limits? What counts as a campaign period? How many public resources? What public resources can and cannot be used? Along that, we want simple transparency, timely reports, that show significant funding while protecting small donors with sensible thresholds. We are also looking how parties are registered and recognized. What responsibilities comes with party status? How do other political actors, including groups that lobby, advocate, or organize, should report when they spend money to influence elections? And we need modern rules for digital campaigning, social media, online ads, mass messaging, and data all used, all shaped campaigns today, and our laws should reflect that in a way that still respects privacy and data protection expectations. Fourth, governance and oversight. This pillar is about protecting the independence of our elections. The parliamentary registrar is already an independent officer, and we want to support that independence by strengthening the tools and mandate needed to oversee elections and any new financial rules that emerge from this reform. We're looking at clearer legal powers, better systems, and practical enforcement tools. The ability to request information, run checks, carry out audits, and apply proportionate sanctions where rules are broken. This also includes modern support for guidance, education, and investigations. We want faster, clearer campaigns and dispute processes, so voters, parties, and candidates know exactly how concerns will be handled. Finally, regular reviews and plain language public reports after each election and finance cycle. This lets people see that an independent officer, not politicians, is assessing the system and driving continued improvement. We've taken a steady, open approach to this work from the start, and I want to show that how that continues as reforms develop. So far, we've been in regular conversations with the parliamentary registrar, drawing on her knowledge on how the elections work on the ground. That partnership will continue throughout this entire process. We've also spoken directly to overseas Bermudian students to understand what real barriers they face and what would make absentee voting practical. We've engaged youth groups, activists, and civil society on access, fairness, and trust. We've reached across to the opposition as well to keep this work as bipartisan as possible. We've also studied absentee models used elsewhere to see what could translate to Bermuda. Looking ahead, the engagement gets wider. We'll hold more town halls across the island, continue working with parties and other political actors on campaign and finance rules. We'll keep reaching out to eligible Bermudians overseas as options are refined. And as draft reforms take place, we'll bring them back to the public. There will be more updates, more consultations, and a working group with a cross-section of Bermudians to make sure that a range of voices are guiding the final package. Now, we've covered quite a bit tonight, and I wanted to get to a point where I really hear from you. Our elections work, and we want to keep them strong. These reforms are about making voting easier to use, making the rules clearer and fairer, and giving the parliamentary registrar's office the support it needs to stay fully independent. None of this happens without the people's voices, and your input will shape what that looks like in the end. On screen, you'll see the QR code that I mentioned earlier, that you can use to send us questions, but we will open up for persons to actually have this discussion or talk about the things that they wish. And with that, I want to thank you for coming out, and I want to open the floor up for discussion, and I'll pass it back to Mr. Shmari Talbot-Good.
Well, thank you, Minister, for that presentation. Give him a round of a hand, everybody. I do not see any questions yet on Slido. I'll do a refresh. But if there are no questions on the app, I will take some from the floor. Mr. McAlwin?
On the absentee voting, kind of like the presentation focuses on students who are voting, other people voting that live overseas.
Thank you for that. The reason we focus on students is we find that is the closest, that is the nearest threshold to actually attack our first. Conversations around expanding the voting to other persons that live overseas will take part as we involve these conversations as we move forward. In the Progressive Labor Party's platform, we specifically said, open up, introduce absentee voting for Bermudians that are overseas studying, that qualify to vote. And so that's where, that's the starting point. I'm not saying that's the ending point, but that is, that is the reason. That is the sole reason why we're talking about it from that perspective. I anticipate that from the conversations we have, that we'll probably go slightly further than just students, but that's, we have to have a starting point on how that starts. One of the things that I found quite interesting is having conversations with some students that are overseas studying, and it's a wide range of different, of different things that we're getting from them. And unbelievably, there are some students that feel that they shouldn't be voting, whereas others feel that they should. So those are the types of policy, those are the types of policy directions that we are... It's critical that we pull together and we get a firm understanding of what it is that Bermuda Inc., Bermuda the Voting Public, actually want to see as we move forward.
All righty. Thank you, Minister, for that. I'm just doing another refresh. All I got to do is, has anyone? Has anyone? Go ahead, ma'am.
What are the first criteria of eligibility for individuals who live overseas? What's the eligibility criteria? You know, have they lived five years? What length of time are you talking about?
And that is the biggest unknown. That is the biggest unknown, and that is where our stand, our, the party stance, the Progressive Labor Party stance is. We really have to have those conversations before we start tinkering around with all, with the election rules and any legislation. We have to have answers to those particular questions. There are some people that say, if you left Bermuda, the... Currently, the rules are, if you're, if you're not here six months out of, out of 12 months, that, that's not, it's... If you leave for more than six months, you are ineligible. And not ordinary resident in Bermuda. You're ineligible. Now, should that stay? Should that be adjusted? Those are the types of conversations we need to have. As I started off by saying, voting is something that's sacrosanct, and you've seen how it's moved over the years to increase the franchise. But it does come to a point where you've got a, there's a line that has to be drawn in the sand that says, "If you do not do these things, you do not qualify." And we have to come, we, right now, we're looking at how do we modernize that so it fits what we, as the voting public, actually want. And it's not gonna, it's not something that we can work out overnight. It has to take conversations like this to come up with that.
Thank you, Minister.
You had here that you've been looking at different models as far as the absentee voting. How long have you been looking at these models?
We have started...
Because I believe how long has it been on your platform that you had this idea?
The first time it appeared on our plat, on the Progressive Labor Party's platform was February 2025 for this election. We've started looking at various models. We initially started, the election was February, I wouldn't say around May, we started looking at various models.
And how would the absentee voter, where and how would they register?
Again, that is one of the questions that we are aiming to gather of the things that the Bermuda public wants to know, and then we'll, when we talked about putting together a working group to actually discuss those things, that is what, the idea of sessions like this is to collect the things that people are unsure of, so we can say, here's the stuff we need to work on before we go back and say, here's what this package could look like. And so that is a question that was brought up by several students as well. It's like, how would someone register to vote if they weren't registered when they left Bermuda? And again, that is a very, again, it's a very meticulous topic, but it is one that has to be had, it's one that has to be talked about, and policy direction has to be developed around that before we say we're gonna have absentee balloting.
Because you have some of those that do go overseas with their families for further education. So as far as them, they wouldn't have an address in Bermuda, right?
Right, and it's funny you said it. That's exactly what...
Because they do put on their children for their education.
I would say that's one of the things that really impressed us when we're talking to students about this, especially ones that are overseas studying, and those are some of the questions they ask. It's like, well, where would I vote if I, if I don't, if I'm not registered anywhere in Bermuda? I don't normally, I'm not normally resident there. I think one of the, one of the most interesting questions asked by one of the students was, "I've never been to Bermuda, but I'm a Bermudian. If I enroll in school, does it automatically make me eligible to vote? Because I'm in school, although I have nothing to do with the country." And so those are the types of questions that, that did come up, and those are real policy directions that need to be hammered out before we just say, "Students overseas can vote."
Or maybe at the school that they're attending?
Well, again, it comes down, the way our voting process works, you have to be registered to an address so you can be assigned to a constituency. If you've never been here and you're in school, we, we, say tomorrow, we pass a law that says, "Bermudian students in school can vote." And someone rose up and says, "I've never been to Bermuda ever in my life, but I'm in school." Does, doesn't that mean I got a right to vote? That's the type of information that needs to be sorted out before we change laws. Hold on, there's somebody behind you. She was behind, someone in the back had her hand up first.
We mentioned, the way the partners will be in time in the voting contest, you said you're gonna target students. I'm curious whether or not only kind of framework along with students, you know, you've got the children, you know, part-time students, you know, students that, that look different, you know, who are remote students, whether they have characteristics or some guidelines with regards to what the student actually looks like as well. The other thing is that there are Bermudian students who are registered and basically are very astute and kept up with their, their right and ensure that they'll own the registry so that when they come home, they ensure that they have a license, they ensure all those pieces are intact. So they are attached, but never had the opportunity to do it. They're looking for that opportunity. And maybe of an age older and younger, what we would consider a student. So I look at all of these caveats are gonna be taken into consideration when we're talking about students, even if it's just coming to students first.
And I, I...
Next student could look like anybody.
I'm absolutely, 100% behind that. We just have to, we have to have the conversation and say, this is all the things we have. What do we want to actually narrow it down to?
Right, because I'm 66 years old, but planning to do my job here, and I'm planning on being a IED. So I'm looking at school that I come here to.
Exactly. So, and, and you're right, because when people say students, they automatically think of this young person who's been overseas, and they don't think, I think one of those, one of the students we spoke to that's in, in the UK said he hasn't been back to Bermuda in decades. He left, he's a Bermudian, he left for boarding school. He's worked, he's gone back, got his associate, he's worked, he's gone back, got his bachelor's, he's worked, he's gone back to get his masters, and now he's working on another masters. And he was the one that said, "Why should I have a right to vote just because I'm a student and I'm in school?" You know, and I thought it was very interesting to hear him actually say that. And he said, "I visit Bermuda every now and then, you know, my family still, I stay a family when I come, but like, I don't really know much about Bermuda." So I thought it was, it was quite interesting hearing that from actual students that, that are in the mix.
And we know the institution of learning was different. You can have a brick and mortar one, with an online, a verbal one, you need a whole different type. So the student will look like Jackie Lee.
All right, there. Ms. Jacobs?
I was just thinking about the various oversight processes that would have to take place. We'd be looking at, to voting overseas and students and people living overseas being able to, to vote. I was wondering what kind of oversight we care currently in terms of even policing those people that leave the island for six months and they're ready to vote. Like, how would we actually police that, or what type of oversight is around that?
The Electoral, the Electoral, Parliamentary Election Act is quite clear on what is a, what is, what is considered ordinary resident, how a person is removed from the rules and the various things along that. It also appoints, and I'm trying to go from memory here, that political parties are allowed to appoint scrutineers. But there's supposed to be one per branch, one per constituency. So you're supposed to have 36 times two parties, 72, in order for that process to work. And no one's appointed scrutineers forever. And so there's no one actually doing it. I mean, the parliamentary registrar does its best of checking. If you know someone who's left, you can make a complaint, and there's a process. They must publish and say, "You've been deemed not to live here," and stuff, and things. But it is a very honorous process, as it currently exists. And so that is one of the things we're looking at. How do we have, how do we make the voting roll as accurate as possible? And that's one of the, that's part of some of the things that we also need to have a conversation around.
So in your opinion, is it happening? Like, are you actually policing and saying, "No, you're actually living in Portugal, what's that amount of money?" You're only coming to vote. You can't, is that happening? Or that's just theory of what should be happening, but...
I want to say yes, yes, I want to say yes to both. I actually want to say yes to both. Yeah. So it, it, there are times when persons are told, "Wait a minute, you haven't been here, no." But I'm not going to be that optimistic and say it, people don't slip past that.
I do want to go to the Slido. We do have a question. How does campaign financing shape who can run? And is the cost now hurting our democracy? Is that, is that why you want to include it in the reform conversation?
Okay, can you repeat?
How does campaign financing shape who can run? And is this, and is the cost now hurting our democracy? Is this why you want to include it in the reform, i.e. campaign finance?
Okay, campaign finance, this is something that has been talked about for, for a long, long time. This is something that's actually been talked about a long time and how it could work in, in our constituency. I mean, we all can go back to the good old days when you would come out and you'd find $100 in your gas cylinder, and you'd be like, oh, well, we know who that came from. I better make sure I vote for that person. And those sorts of things that did take place, but it's all anecdotal. We now have situations where parties do get donations, and we don't know who they're coming from. And there is, they also run that risk of someone... And there is al- they also run that risk of someone who may wanna donate, but saying, you know, what is the rules around that? Can I do it? Can I not do it? Will it come back? You know, where, will it come back later if that particular party happens to win an election? And then I get a contract, someone says, well, you did give them money, you know? So that's the sort of things that we just certainly need to have some, some, some framework around. So this is not about disenfranchising. And also, there are, we also talked about, um, in most countries, once you declare, all candidates are given X amount of money to run and, and to, to level the playing field, at least to a certain, to a certain degree. And so when you have camp, if you don't have campaign financing around that, it's, um, you know, anybody could just say, I'm running. Because right now, all you need is two people to sign a paper that says, you're, you're a candidate and take the money and run. You know, and not do anything with it in terms of to actually run a campaign. So those are the, those are the types of things and the ideas that are being tossed up there. But as I said, the formation of the working group to actually hammer on these things. And, um, I did also mention that we also have, um, like all Commonwealth, we're, we're a member of the, the CPA, the Commonwealth Parliamentary Association. And there are benchmarks around these types of things that we'll be taking from there as well to say, how can these be, uh, Bermudianized? To work for what our elections look like here in Bermuda?
Yeah, I'm wondering, these are experience, well, I think experience has lasted actually was, John didn't declare this as criminal record, I think, as a candidate. And I wondered if there's any protection for anyone running, if they're chapped a pass or how is that gonna be handled? Scampering to use people in the media, discrediting people, are you gonna handle these things? But that, you know, because you're doing reforms and people change their lives and things like that. So this can be open ended where, you know, you know, pockets coming down, everyone's taking attention, the rest of it. And other things that would be, some rules put in place prior to someone being selected? Or would it be protected during the campaign? What, what, what question do you have?
Um, thank you for that, that's actually something, uh, you have to add to the list, because it's something we actually hadn't discussed. But I do know there are regulations around, um, you cannot be convicted, you cannot be in prison to be eligible to run. You could be charged or you could be pending election, pending trial and all of those sorts of things. So it, it, it's some conversations, certainly some conversation that could be had around that of, um, you know, what, what is the criteria of, of, of candidates? Because at the end of the day, you don't wanna disenfranchise anyone. That, that is, that is the, that is the red line in the sand, as they say, the line in the sand. You don't wanna disenfranchise anyone, but at the same time, you have to have some sort of standards to uphold. And so that, that is something that we'll certainly add to the long, the list that's growing as we have these conversations of things that we potentially need to, um, put into what, a reframing of how our elections run look like.
Um, when it comes to advertising, like publicly, the public space, pictures, the woods, things like that. It's gonna be, always I can't draw, but should everyone that's running in a particular constituency have all the pictures together? To defer as opposed to everything being separated, see a picture on the corner of one candidate, picture on the corner? How are you gonna consolidate it to one area where the public are accessing freely, grow down with everyone to run? Right, there's options to run, there's dresses to run and it'd be like one focal point where everyone is just.
Oh, wow. When it comes to signs, uh, that's another thing that we are working on, these ba- the banners and signs thing. And we actually talked about political banners and signs, uh, that are part of that conversation that's taking place. Um, but, um, again, uh, when we talk about campaign financing and, and leveling the, leveling the playing field, I, I see some merit in what you've actually talked about of, of creating a, creating a space where in each constituency, there is, there is a standard there. But you also wanna be able to allow people to kind of flourish and do cre- more creative things for themselves. So I get what you're saying. I think what I'm reading is some way where there is, there is a central location, you could find all the information you need to find out. But then it's up to the candidate to enhance that in other ways. Is that, is that kinda what you're talking about?
You can be put in station, you see someone that you haven't heard about, you speak, I see you in bad, you get to that part. I do this question, you know, but they're running in a constituency. Like the same autonomy, the digital basis, we're done with the government basis. So I just think that the public, they move out of the form if they need, and then they can make a uniform decision. As opposed to getting surprised in the general election.
Well, I, I would say as, as a politician myself and to all the other politicians in here, if, um, there are persons in that constituency that don't know you exist before they see you at the polling station, you're not doing something right. You're certainly not doing something right. But I, I, but I, I, I get, I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying. Right now, it's, um, basically all you get is a picture and the constituency they're running at, right? That, that's, that's the only thing that gets published. The picture of the candidate and the constituency they're running on the website, that, that's the only thing that gets, that, that actually gets published. But, um, perhaps, perhaps you want to do something, maybe, um, a, a, a short bio, you know, what is allowed, you know, fifty words to say, oh, something along those lines, perhaps, perhaps that could be, perhaps that's something that could be discussed.
So I thought, so just piggybacking that, is there any thought to ensuring that candidates have some, have something to do with the area that they're running in? In other words, people run, people from the Navy jump out and decide that everyone's something. Why can't you do this? I wanna be the foreigner. So I'm just saying, so, so then, you know, there is a lot of work that they're doing within the communities that they're running through. That sort of scenario, I, I know it's, Bermuda's a small place and, but, you know, some torn, they can hear any size to run down and, I don't even know, spit something. And I never see them before, I mean, that's still up to be, to push forward, but I'm just saying, have they served and people serving in their communities?
Well, I think that's a, that that's, I wanna say that's probably not getting into election reform. That's more of how the community feels about that particular person. If they're able, if a person lives in Somerset and comes down Devil's Hill and wins over everybody with, by whatever they're doing, I'm, I'm actually very much, I'll be very much impressed by that particular candidate. Um, and, and so without dis- without disenfranchising anyone, so anyone, the way our rules are, you know, as long as you're Bermudian and you're qualified to be a candidate, you can run wherever you want. And, um, it's really then up to you to convince the people in that community to actually vote for you. And so I'm not sure there's any way to police that, to say you must be, you know, fourth generation person from that area in order to, to run. I don't believe that that's the direction we wanna go in. Um, but I do believe that, um, you know, it's up to the community. And one of the things that I think we really need to have more of is electoral education. And, um, one of the students that, that we talked to was very, very forceful in that. And, and it was interesting to watch us, me and Shemari step back and listen to them kinda go talk to each other. Because they knew each other, but they weren't in the same schools, obviously, and go back and forth. And one of them was really, really adamant about, um, the people should take time to learn about the process, learn about the candidates and be really knowledgeable. Because, you know, it's one thing to say, I wanna vote, but it's another thing to say, I actually know what I'm voting for, why I'm voting for a person. So, um, campaign, um, um, election education is something that I always promote. I always tell, um, candidates to really add as part of the things they're doing when they're canvassing and, and holding forms like this. Talk about how that process works and, um, try and get people to understand, this is what you intend to bring to the game. And so this is why you should actually vote, vote for me.
Thank you, Minister. Um, I'll let Zara go ahead and then I'll do this slide.
Ms. Zara? How are you doing?
Um, so I have a question about something you mentioned a while ago, I wanted to. So we've been thinking that someone, you're telling someone who, um, has been away for decades now, and definitely studying, you're saying that person said to like, why would I have the right to vote? And I'm just wondering, like, I mean, I guess this is not, that's why we're promoting people, but definitely it's wrong, and like the students, I will run and come back. And would this person be obligated to vote? Like, would that specific example kind of like make it so that, you know, absentee voting is encouraged? Because there are some people like this, like, how would that sort of, is that, is my question answered?
Um, I think you're talking about.
How would that affect this absentee vote? It could like, yeah, maybe you have been away for a long time, but that is, if you really don't wanna vote, I guess, there's no, like, obligation.
Yeah, I know there's no obligation and we have, um, done, some of our research, research shows that in some, there is a country where it's illegal not to vote. Uh, Australia, it's illegal not to vote. There are, um, some Caribbean countries where, and, um, uh, uh, this is the one that really caught us off guard. Where, um, all liquor sales and liquor stores and bars are closed on election day. So, um, that, that, that would be, that would be Bahamas. Um, a sure, surefire way not to win an election in Bermuda. But, um, and, and there are all sorts of things. And so one of the things we would, we really want to do, and one of the things that I, I, I've learned from being in the education point is there are wonderful ideas all over, but they have to be cultureized to work here in Bermuda. And so in terms of, I mean, we want to have political education and all parties that call themselves political parties should be engaged in political education to educate people on how the process works and what is the, well, what is, well, what, 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 what is, what is, what do they stand for, what are the sorts of things they want? Because that's what gets people excited about voting, because votes matter. Decisions at the election day matter, they don't matter on that day. They do matter on that day, but they also matter years and, and in some cases, generations from now. And so you really have to be keen, you really have to be keen on how you're gonna educate the voting public on why they should vote. And the rash, the, the reasons of having a really good look at what platforms are, what persons are, you know, the history of what people do and what they plan to do in the future. So for that young man, his issue was, because he also spoke about Bermudians who had left Bermuda. So his, 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 his thing was, and one thing we do have to understand Bermuda is considered a small country-state. And so there are uniqueness things that go around. And in most countries that allow absentee balloting of all citizens, that citizen is tied back to that country in some way, shape or form, and it's usually in the form of paying taxes. So I'm not sure there's anybody who's gonna move to the UK and be there twenty years and pay taxes every year back to Bermuda because they just want to have the position to vote. So those are the types of conversations we, we certainly do need to have. Uh, with the changing of immigration status that now allows, um, I believe it's up to grandchildren to claim Bermudian status, um, that may not have ever been here, it then becomes a really interesting conversation when you're talking about, you know, you have Bermuda status, but you actually do not have a, an actual connection to the island. And so the persons, and you'll find the conversation you've had, the person say, I live here, I pay taxes. It's public funds that are being expended. Should someone who has no skin in that game still be allowed to decide how that, how those funds are allocated?
I wanna go to the slider, but I'm. Okay, I will ask this question from the slider. What's the role of, of the opposition within the tech, context of this conversation?
Um, the role is, um, and, and it's, it's, it's been in the public domain that the One Bermuda Alliance has put a bill forward for absentee balloting that says students studying overseas, persons on work assignments and persons on medical leave, uh, should be able to vote. And so we've had, we've been having conversations, uh, with them to say this is, um, and the bill, the conversations we've had is, we just wanna pass the law, you guys figure out how it works. Our stance is, no, we have to figure out how this works and then craft legislation that suits this. And so that's where we find ourselves. However, uh, the door is, um, so these are ongoing conversations, but I think what both parties understand is that this is something that we have to be bipartisan on and we have to work, we have to move forward on. We just disagree on the starting point. Um, I've, I've said this before and I will continuously say this, this type of conversation we have is not political party driven. This is people driven. And this is, this is not an OBA, um, this is not OBA legislation, this is not PLP legislation. This is the people's legislation that we're actually working on and we need to figure out a way to be bipartisan as we move forward. Um, this process will continue, um, the extension for the One Bermuda Alliance to participate in this is always, is there. They will, they will have their chance to have their say, um, as we move forward. Um, so, but currently, right now, we're, we're, I guess we would say we're at a loggerheads on how to move forward.
Thank you, Minister.
Thank you, Minister.
Sure.
I'm just like to, not necessarily ask, ask a question about the campaign funding. Um, there has, like, I have been in conversations around, you know, folks who do move away from the island and not pay taxes and et cetera. But I think we do have a conversation around decisions that are made on the island that do impact people who vote there. Um, the prime example would see what happened with Brexit, you know, decisions that have been made by capitalists, uh, not by, but decisions that have been made may impact that people feel. So I think as we're having conversations around electoral reform, granted individuals, regardless of what their status is off the island, when they're in that country, they're seen as a reading. So decisions are made here regardless of what has been, has impacted. So just wanting to, um, put that into the record and to take that into consideration as a whole people.
Thank, thank you for that. Um, um, ob- obviously, and I would certainly agree with you that decisions made in Bermuda will affect Bermudians no matter where they are. And, um, some decisions will, some decisions will directly, but the majority of them indirectly. Um, a decision like Brexit was something that was done, uh, through the UK and of course it had implications on, on Bermudians. Um, but, um, there, there is, there is a simple solution for that. It, um, and one of the things is, and, and Bermuda has to be a country that welcomes our stu- our, our people back and encourages them to want to move back. And so that's another piece of the puzzle as we talk about things like this. Um, one, one of the things that I think we, we tend to not fully recognize is how interconnected a lot of the things that we do are with other policies and other things that, that, that are actually done. And we need to do, I, I, I would say that we, we do a pretty good job of, of pointing that out. But, um, we tend to kinda get siloed in our, in our thinking because those who know it feel it, right? And so, uh, one of the, one of the things, it's, um, you know, this is my personal situation. So the things that are around my personal situation are the most important to me. Whereas the with the po- as us as politicians and especially as ministers, while I would love to do this today, I also have to recognize the, the ripple impacts it has on all these other things that may not even be seen by everyone else. Because they're just saying, get on with this. But there are ripple, ripple effects there that need to be taken into account. And then it becomes my job to explain, this is, we're doing this and this is the, the cause it's going to have. And like I said, um, and I said it a couple of times already, you know, it's, um, it's critically important that when we're talking about something as important as widening the franchise, we have as many voices in the room providing suggestions. And even today, we, I said, I've heard some things that, hey, we hadn't even actually considered because we don't know it all. But it is really critical that we come and say, this is how we wanna move forward and get a mandate that says, okay, what kind of, well, we're not gonna get everybody to say yes, but we wanna get something that everybody can be comf- that the majority can be comfortable with. And then we start crafting legislation to suit that versus the other way around.
You know, the question, as far as logistics, how, how, do we have, is it problematic for people to get to the polling station as things lie currently? Or do you need to put other mechanisms in place so that people aren't disenfranchised and getting to the polling station? I don't know how some people get a lot of this press and then, and then what structures in place to accommodate your community?
The, there, there's quite a few things that have been put in place to accommodate, to ensure everybody is disenfranchised. As many people as possible are disenfranchised. Um, the parliamentary registrar will, the parliamentary registrar agents will actually visit homes for, for sick and shut-in that just can't get out. They visit, um, rest homes as well, they visit the hospital, they visit, even this time, I know for a fact that they visit a gapay house. I had a voter that was in a gapay house, but he wanted to vote and, um, and he did get to vote. And, but he, he couldn't leave, but he did get to vote. Um, then we have the, um, travelers, um, travelers, um, voting process that is the, um, we call it early voting, I'm trying to remember the exact name of it. Advance poll, advan- advance, we have the advance poll. And that has actually, that, that franchise has been widened. Um, uh, persons who are involved in elections such as the agents, um, the. Um, uh, persons who are involved in elections such as the agents, um, the parliamentarians or the people who are running get to vote in advance poll, which they couldn't before. And um, seniors now get to uh, vote in advance polling, which they couldn't before. So as, as I talked about when I start, when I started one of the first few slides is, our democracy has shifted as things have come up. And now we find ourselves in an era where we have to start, we have to make another shift. Um, and that is, how do we widen the franchise as wide as we want it to be to accommodate those sorts of things? Because when you think about it in other countries, everybody can vote in the advance poll if you want. Do we want to do that here? You know, th- those are the types of questions we want to ha, we want to ask. Yes?
Can you imagine about uh, electoral education? I think that's extremely important for the general population that we have now because I was just looking at the statistics that you put up there. And out of a hundred percent, fifty-four percent of the Bermuda population voted. So that means you're forty-six percent of the population did not vote. So I, I think it's admirable to talk about bringing in students and absentee voting, which I think we should consider. But we need to also look at electoral education for the people right now because rather than just waiting until then, start now. Because there's no way that you should have more than fifty-four percent of the population vote. Next election, because then that number no longer become valid or doesn't become available.
Well, I think part of, I think, I think you've hit the nail on the head when it comes to um, um, electoral education. I know it's something that does, that the parliamentary registrar's office is interested in doing. And it's um, something that I certainly will be, now that I'm the minister of this, I'll certainly be fighting for more funding for those types of things to happen. Um, they used to, uh, they used to, um, I remember uh, talking with the parliamentary registrar, they used to have this debate competition that actually talked about this type of stuff. Um, we have uh, youth parliament that is still going, but it's not as prevalent as it, as it used to be. And those sort of types of things, you'd be surprised how many of the older politicians will stand up and say, I got my start and those sorts of things. And that's what's got me interested and that's what's got me moving forward in that. So those are the types of things I know I am looking to bring back uh, within us. But um, um, thank you for that su- suggestion because having educational, electoral education amongst older people is something that, that could just be done as well. We could have sessions like this where we talk about, you know, how this, how this process works, how you can be more disenfranchised, how you can be more informed, how you can make your, make sure your vote counts, um, counts and matters.
Just to give you back one more question, maybe suggestion. Do you think we'd have to start in Bermuda College or some other school, Cedar Bridge or places like that? Early on, early start so that you grew up, you knew for a time, you're eighteen or twenty-one, you grew up, you sure did.
I mean, I have been to, there are several primary schools that host um, annual election. There where you gotta be, they, they divide the school into parties and, and you gotta go in like, and you gotta have candidates and they have to go and actually talk to the students, convince themselves to vote and they actually fill them, mock election and all of that stuff. So I've seen it done, I've seen it done, it's happened in pri, I've seen it in primary schools, I've seen it in middle schools and I've seen, um, and when you talk about the high schools where they really have um, persons who campaign for Mr. CBA or Mr. and Mrs. CBA, Mr. and Mrs. Barclay and stuff. So they do have a form of that where um, it was funny because I was looking at my, in my daughter's room, she had a sticker of you vote so-and-so for Mrs. um, Cedar Bridge, right? And it was an actual sticker, I was just shocked that they're, 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 they're campaigning with little, little stickers that they're giving to students to stick on. And you know, it's the stuff that students want, you know, um, a little sticker. So it, it's, it's really, it, it is something that's there, but there's always room for more.
Thank you. I also want to hear that it also starts not just in these schools, but at home as well. Um, and on the slider we hear, what information do you think should be public on the voter registrar?
Um, voter registrar, right now, the only public thing on the voter registrar is name, where you live and your date of birth. I believe that's the only thing, that's the only thing that's public. Well, that's the, that's the other thing, that we, we are now having conversations with PIPA and, and how that works. And again, that's uh, as we said, we're moving into a different era and those are the types of, and again, that's another policy thing that has to be discussed um, before we move forward with, with legislation, is how PIPA will now factor into, you know, saying anybody can, you know, these people can vote and how, what, how's that information collected? And so you, you're, you're correct with that, that is one of the things that is on the radar of how we have that discussion. So it's, it actually works that PIPA falls under this ministry as well.
And how, how far have you gotten with that so far?
Um, the, we're, we're, we are in um, we are in the discussion. So there, there hasn't been much discussion with um, PIPA in, in terms of that. I know they have reached out to the parliamentary registrar to express some of their, some of their things, but that is all part of this conversation that's going to be warming up in the, over the next um, couple of months. Because we have mandated that absentee balloting and, and electoral reform should, will be completed by September twenty twenty-six and be enforced by September twenty twenty-six. And as you can see, it's a lot of conversation that needs to go into how this policy direction actually needs to be formed. And so those are, that's why we've been doing a lot of data collection um, over the last few months and now we're actually going out and talking to persons as well.
Yes?
Um, you did say in the media recently that um, it takes a year, you want to get the I's studied and the T's caused and be able to put this through, um, this absentee voting. Um, which is every year. To any, anything that um, doesn't go through, you have to wait another year to put it through. Why can't we do it now than wait until next year, October twenty-six?
Quite understanding the question. The opposition. Okay, so there, there is, there is a, there is a rule.
And how far have we come now in twenty twenty-five?
And we haven't-
Or do we have to go through all of this first?
If you have, well, based on the conversation we've had, you've seen a lot of big questions asked that actually need meat behind it before we can say this is the direction we're going. What we do not want, and this is where I say we're at loggerheads with the One Bermuda Alliance on this, is what we do not want is to pass a bill that then requires amendment after amendment after amendment after amendment. We do not want to pass a bill because when you think about it, when you think about it, if you pass a bill that says students can vote and then we come back and say, oh, wait a minute, only these type of students can vote. You've already passed a bill that says students can vote, which means everybody, right?
If it doesn't pass, you have to wait another year?
No, no, no. Well, what, what happens is, um, with bills in the house, if they do not pass, if they do not pass, you cannot bring another bill that has, that speaks to that particular subject for six months or the um, or the end of the, of the current legislative session. So that, that, that's what the rule is for that. And so the next, this legislative session that we're in now will end in September. And so we wouldn't be, if, if the bill did not pass, there's, there could be, there could be some rules that prevent us from bringing, well, this bill only speaks to absentee balloting, absentee voting. It could be some rules in place, there could possibly be rules in place that say, we could bring all of the stuff that we're bringing, but you wouldn't be able to do the absentee voting part yet. And so, but the other part that, and you said, why can't we do it now? If this bill passes tomorrow, i- if this bill passed tomorrow, you still wouldn't, we still wouldn't have absentee balloting because we still need to work out all this, all this stuff. And so it makes sense to work out all of this first before we pass legislation. And that's the stance that, and that's the conversation I've been having with the One Bermuda Alliance.
So are we like fifty percent or everything or what? Where we at, where we at? Because this thing seemed to have become so prevalent right after February this year.
Um-
Because it's been going on every time it happened in the election, this absentee, these children, okay? And then in February, it became, since February, it's, it's like, you know, born all this rain.
Um, interesting you say that, right? Um, I think-
That's not the right, you're very short here, can you?
You, you, um, um, there are lots of things that could happen. Um, a, a parliamentarian could say, I'm retiring tomorrow and we have to have a bi-election. However, what I do want to state is that this is something that is really serious and it's, it is shown that it has a, it has to be done correctly. And I do not want to push anything across the line that hasn't been properly vetted, hasn't been properly researched and has not been properly put forth to the people of Bermuda to say, this is what we're going, this is how we want to move forward. And so it, it would be unfortunate if someone were retired tomorrow and then there's a, a election has to happen or, as you say, a snappy election, which I doubt will happen, but it's very possible that will happen. It'll be unfortunate, this will not be, this will not be done. But I can guarantee you that it will be done by September twenty twenty-six. That's the date that I have given, that's the line in the sand that I have drawn. And as I did say, even if we did go pass this bill tomorrow, we will not have absentee balloting in place until September twenty twenty-six. Because that's what we have done from the research we've taken and said, that's how long it's going to take for us to do this work.
Well, thank you, Minister. I would just go to the slider real quick. Um, with some hiccups in education reform, what assurances can you give that electoral reform won't repeat that? And how will accountability be ensured?
I'm not sure how the two actually relate. Um, I don't believe there were hiccups in education reform. Um, when you're doing something as massive as what we were doing, is changing a, a, a school system that had been in place for nearly three decades, um, there's bound to be things that need to be refined as you move along. And that is why um, the reform process is being done in stages. So we can finish one stage, learn from what, what, what happened during that stage and then start on the next stage. This is an ex, this is simply an exercise that we will be moving forward with. Uh, we will be reaching out to the people, we'll be having more conversations like this, we'll be putting together a working group and we will move forward and we will have absentee balloting in place by twenty twenty-six, September twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, Minister.
After yours reform, do we have to present this to the British government or the Government House? Or does the man here approve of you this time?
And that's when we come to uh, political education. We would pass a bill, we would pass a bill in the House of Assembly. And that bill would then go to the Senate of Bermuda and hopefully it passes there. Um, I'm saying it's going to pass because by the time we bring this forward for debate, everybody on both sides of the aisle should have already had their eyes on it and be ready to say, we're moving forward with it. So I don't see any pushback there. Our laws are then um, given to the governor to sign. Once he signs, it becomes law, once uh, the minister responsible says it, it, it shall be. Um, some laws will have a date it becomes effective, some laws are effective immediately, as soon as it gets signed on. So that's what will happen on this particular part. The other part of, and I wouldn't call it electoral reform, constitutional reform, that will require us to have conversations with the British government um, and their parliament in terms of changing our constitutional order. Um, again, political education, we don't have a constitution, we have a constitutional order, which is an, which is an act of the British Parliament. So in order to change that, the British Parliament has to make those changes. And so there's, there are two different things there. So this would be amendments to our existing laws, which we uh, with the way our constitutional order is written, it allows us wide latitude of the internal affairs of our country, except for the governor must give his assent, which in most cases is not an issue. So once that happens, it becomes law. I mean, that's why I can confidently say by September twenty twenty-six, this will be in the House, um, debated, passed and become law of the land of um, electoral reform in its entirety.
All right, one more question from the slider. If you remove date of birth, how do you plan, on the voter rule, how do you plan to identify voters with the same name?
I don't believe anyone said removing the date of birth. I said what was uh, well, I think, I said what was, what's public knowledge is, the person, where they live and date of birth. And I think that we kind of moved into a petty situation of, of that information and what's being controlled. PIPA, I'm sorry, PIPA thing on what's actually being controlled. But um, there is, there is um, one, one thing about our democracy is based on how our voting processes works, everyone has the ability to ensure that the person coming into the poll is a registered voter in that constituency. And these are the types of conversations that need to be held and with intention. Because I'm, I, I've been around this game long enough to know that there are some things that you could change overnight, but there are some things that you need to walk very slowly on and change over time. And so some of the things, like when we talked about student voting versus other people, and this, this young lady said, student voting is something that people know they want. Do people know that they really want someone who hasn't lived here for five years to vote? That's something they don't, they don't really think they want right now. And so we work with what we know and we kind of work on the things that we, we can, we might have to form opinions on in, at, at later times. So I don't know who said that, but definitely I don't see the uh, the, the name of the date of birth of a person being removed from the public register. I don't see that ever happening.
I don't have any more questions on the sliders. So if anybody in the audience has anything else they would like to air?
Well, with that, I just want to thank, we did um, plan to be here for eight o'clock, but I want to thank everyone um, for coming out. That certainly um, we've gotten some good information, certainly, um, some things we hadn't even considered as we move forward. Um, again, I will, um, to answer that question about how the One Bermuda Alliance fits in this, we'll continue to have the conversations with um, with them on what we feel is the better way for Bermuda to move forward and we'll just have to see where those chips fall as we move forward. But um, as I said, our plan is to hammer out all of the policy decisions that need to be hammered out around this prior to taking legislation forward. And we, I've already made the commitment that that legislation taken forward will be a bipartisan piece of legislation that will have input from the opposition, certainly um, within that. So we won't be tabling anything in the House that the opposition hasn't seen yet. That, that's a promise that I can give as the minister responsible for this.
Well, Minister, once again, I want to thank you and thank each and every one of you for being here with us this evening. Please help yourself with, for, with the last bit of refreshments and enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you once again.
Um, Shemari, please just remind him, sign the sheet, give us your information so we can keep you abreast.
Yes, we do have the signing sheet here in the corner. If you want to keep abreast with all the reforms that are going on, please put your contact details so that we can contact you with any more um, reforms, meetings and whatnot that we will be conducting. Thank you very much.